Everyone at R S U, let us know that you're going to be here this evening, except for Jamie. I hate that Jamie couldn't be with us. I had some spooning dollars for your talents. I'm in town.
Can you please tell us?
I'll relay him to her.
Please tell us.
I may have to say that after this. After celebration. Anyway, I appreciate you all coming this evening. It's a very special occasion to pay tribute and recognize all of our retirees. You know, this past school year, we witnessed the retirement of 22 employees. One of the largest groups we've had retire in many years. I've been here for a while and I can recall a group that's large. There's 14 professional educators who retired and eight service employees. So quite a large group. It's amazing to me when Brenda and I was kind of looking at some numbers yesterday. These 22 retirees represent 583 years of experience. 583 years of dedicated faithful service to the children and the local communities here in the county. It's just amazing. As a matter of fact, 12 of the people we'll recognize here this evening have 30 or more years of experience. When you think about, you know, the fact that when those retirements happen, you lose your most experienced skill, you know, those valued employees that we have. So on behalf of the board, you know, I do want to give you my heartfelt thank you for all that you've done for the school system. Your service certainly has been greatly appreciated. And all of you, certainly going to be best. Of course, if you're southern, I'll get to see you. We're all good seeing you out there in the schools. But I hope, I do hope that you're able to enjoy your retirement. You know, there's, as I like to say, there's carefree, slow-paced, do what you want, you know, kind of lifestyle that retirees are able to live. I say this all the time with my father-in-law, when he retired, after a few days, I was talking to him and explained to me that I would really enjoy it one day when I got the opportunity to retire. You see, because every day was like Saturday. And he just relishes, you know, retirement and it's been enjoyable for him. But we want this to be fun this evening. It's going to be relaxed atmosphere when we're calling retirees up and presenting you with your gift, token of our appreciation. You know, anyone that has anything they want to say, welcome to do so. But before we get into the actual ceremony, we're going to watch. She comes in wanting to know where the bar was.
I didn't say at the home bar.
But before we recognize the retirees, I'd like to take just a moment to introduce our board members or social office staff members who were with us this evening. Behind me, Mr. Larry Wilkerson. To his side, left, I guess, my left. I don't know what I did, left or right all at the same time.
Your left.
This is Fred Curry, our vice president of the board. And then we have Mr. Steve Presley, president of the board. Carol was unable to join us this evening. She was out of town. She sends her regards. I'm hurt for Mr. Curry.
I just now checked maybe. I think he will be here.
He'll come sliding in.
He may come sliding in. Of course, everyone knows Mr. Lamble, assistant superintendent. And Ms. Pam Fender, assistant superintendent. Tina, in black. I just want to thank Brenda for all of her hard work and planning and preparing for tonight's activity, along with the assistants and Tina. These ladies have started their 40th year of service. Thanks so much for all of you, for everything that you've been. We so greatly appreciate you. You're the best.
Don't retire.
Don't retire. That's why, yeah, please don't. We're not allowed even to discuss that word around here. Sean Donahue, Sean, thank you so much. I, you know, I'm amazed every time I read the paper. It seems like most of the articles I read in there are education-related. It's the school system-related. I don't know how you.
I have an interest. I have a stakehold.
I wonder if there's two Shons. Maybe there's two of you to be able to. There are. Do everything that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're greatly appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
You did a great job. So I tell you, with that said, I'm going to ask the board members to come up front. And Mr. Lamble, this woman, come on. And we have a beautiful glass bottle, water bottle, a bling. I'll tell you what, the first person that comes up and shows everyone what the, okay. The bottle gets handed. And so Brenda says, they're not, that's my. All of the board members here. Our first retiree tonight is Ms. Esther Nelson.
I guess they're starting out with the older.
Ms. Esther Nelson retired on December the 31st, 2016 as the county's only technology coach. Esther's career spanned nearly 40 years, most of which she spent as a science teacher at Hamlin Junior and Senior High School. Congratulations. When Lincoln County School opened in 2006, Esther transferred there once again to teach science for two years. Then to Guy Valley for five years as technology coach. When the county saw the need of a technology coach to assist teachers in all things technology-related, Esther successfully did on that job. She was a great support to teachers as well as administrators, in-school desks, part-of-balance, teacherless plans, and the list goes on and on, even to show people have to turn their computers on sometimes. Over a few years, she taught Saturday School at Hamlin, provided after-school supervision, a computer instructor for gear-up students, and served as a mentor, not only for the first-year science teacher, but as mentor to the county's first Chinese guest teacher in 2007. I didn't know that. How come I had to run around all the time with her? Esther is a multi-talented, mostly self-taught technology guru who never hesitated to help the classroom teacher experiencing technology issues and provided training when new instructional programs were introduced. We were very grateful when Esther agreed to work Sundays between January and June this year to continue the support she provided to teachers and worked closely with Jonah during the end-of-year testing. Her boisterous laughter is certainly missed in the central office. Okay, our next retiree is Robin Tong. Robin will retire, Robin will retire on July 31st, 2017 after 39 years of teaching experience. Robin began her career in 1978 teaching English at Harts High School, where she remained until 2006, when she transferred to the new high school. She returned to her roots at Harts PKA and will retire at the end of this month. Robin has taught credit recovery and summer school program for a number of years, mentored countless new teachers, mentored students at risk, and served on countless adoption committees when language arts textbooks were due for adoption. Her expertise in instruction of English will be greatly missed. Thank you. All right, three, two, one. Our next retiree is Lisa Chapman.
Did you have to bring this?
Yes.
If you brought it, I'm not sure it's true.
Oh, I'm going to tell some things not in here. Lisa Chapman will retire July 31st, 2017 after 33 years of classroom experience teaching language arts, all but three years in Lincoln County. Lisa worked in Campbell County in the early 90s, but returned to Lincoln in 1992. She has taught at Hamlin High, Mid-Kiff Elementary, Duval, Hamlin Junior High, and finally Guy Valley Middle.
You say Harts?
Harts. In Harts. Lisa has served as a mentor for students at risk, an after-school teacher and facilitator, a Saturday School teacher, Hamlin's gear-up coordinator, a mentor teacher, and for many years, a science teacher in the summer credit recovery program. Lisa is actually working at the high school this summer and will retire when credit recovery wraps up at the end of the month.
Sixty.
Three, two, one. Want to say something? Go for it. Lisa, did you have something to say?
No, I don't have anything to say, Bill. I want you to, I do want to say this, though. Mr. Presley hired me because Mr. McCann, I think, had been in a car accident at Camden Park or something. I remember something like that. This leg, I remember.
Broke his leg.
Yeah, I had to play my piano, but you hired me. And then Mr. Curry was good enough my first year that they gave me a desk that was duct taped and fallen to the ground. It's a true story. He comes down the hall and he says, like, "How you doing?" And I said, "Well, fine." He goes, "Well, if you need anything, let me know." And I said, "Well, I would really like to have a new desk." And so he had a new desk delivered to me a couple of weeks later, so. And I had his son in school, so, you know. I met Mr. Lamble early on, too. You know, he was a teacher the first year I was there. Lots of good stories about those entertaining, you know.
Could you tell us about them now?
I'm going to be nice, because there's a crowd of people. Esther was one of my first friends. You know, it's kind of strange. I kind of started with her. She was my first friend, she and Jamie. And I'm sorry that Jamie's not here tonight, so kind of came in with them and leaving with them. So, you know, I did work in Campbell County Schools for three years. You know, I lived down that way, went that way, got rid several times. But, you know, when I came back and they even called me a few times, I decided to stay. So, you know, Lincoln County was home. I love Lincoln County, and the teachers in Lincoln County were just as hard, probably harder with class than those teachers in Campbell County did. So, you know, sometimes we get a bad rap, but I actually told, you know, I know our teachers worked just as hard when I was there. I learned that. So I'm glad I was all over the county. You know, I chose to be all over the county. I enjoyed it all, met all these people, you know, even got to experience working for David Bell. So there's lots of good, lots of good memories in this county. There's lots of, and I will tell David Bell that, so nobody has to. I probably already told him. So, but I have lots of good memories in Lincoln County. So even though this year wasn't my best year in teaching, a lot of, it was difficult at times, I have lots of great memories in Lincoln County. I mean, lots of friends, lots of great memories, lots of good people. And even though Mr. Mid-Kiff really didn't speak to me the first year I taught with him, he would go down the hall and I'd just say, "Good morning," and just go like this. And so he became, you know, he did become one of my good friends. I had his children, so I think he realized I wasn't really crazy or dangerous. But I want, he didn't really speak to me for sure. He was kind of nodding like a gentleman. So I will say that. So that kind of hurt my feelings, but I got over it really quick. Was it true or not? Did you know it's true?
Well, there may be a little more to the story.
Oh, I'm sure there is. Well, now I need to know that part. Lots of good memories in Lincoln County, lots of good memories.
I do remember. I do remember when we had the writing assessment, you had seventh grade, and they were the highest scorers sometimes in the state. I remember one that I mean at 90 percent.
And I'm not bragging or boasting, that's before the computer days. No, when I, because I'm not a techie, but we sit down with kids one-on-one then and, you know, review what they needed and rewrite and rewrite. Those were the old days, but it did work. It did work. Old days.
Our next retiree is Libby Johnson. Libby retired June 30th, 2017 after 38 years of classroom teaching experience.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, I'm sorry. You want to come back for four?
I probably wouldn't mind.
Teach you, Chris. Libby started her career in 1978 as a teacher at Branchland Elementary. Trans.
I don't know. No.
Okay. Where'd you start?
Ranger Mississauga.
Okay, Ranger Mississauga.
I wrote the school list.
Wrote the school list. Okay, then did you go to Branchland? Then went to Pleasantview in 1991, and then to West Hamlin Elementary in 1997. Now we're on track. Where she remained as a kindergarten and PK teacher. Libby has served as a very successful mentor teacher, helping first-year teachers succeed in the classroom. As many of you remember, Libby was her Teacher of the Year last year, a very well-deserved honor and distinction. And I can say this, used to, we'd do all these walkthroughs. And it was, it was, it was, we'd go in there and we'd have a list of teachers. And whoever got in there first, we'd number off, but you'd go down and you'd see where some good teachers were, your best teachers, and you'd make sure you had a couple of them. And I made sure that Libby was one of the classrooms that I wanted to go into in preschool. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want you all to know that I loved every minute of my teaching career, 39 years, and I would probably go back this fall if I had my position back. I just, I love kids, I love people, and I've just, they're all enjoying it. Oh, thank you. Thank you all.
You still want to take tickets for ballgames?
I'm still going to do that.
Okay, so I'll get to see you somewhere regularly then, okay. That's how you get to go to Guy Valley and watch ballgames.
Our next retiree is Cindy Ronnie Shin. Cindy retired on June 30th, 2017 with 33 years' teaching experience. Cindy taught several years in Canal County, two years in Harrison County, and came home to Lincoln County in 2006. And found, man, they just made hers happy. I had to get that in there. Happy's always singing. He's one of my best friends, and he's happy. Happily married, for sure. I had to put that in there, Cindy. Before being hired as a regular teacher, Cindy worked as a substitute teacher at Lincoln County. One of her first assignments had, she had was at Duval School, substituting for Sandy Lawson on February 9th, 1984. She received an excellent evaluation that day from Duval's principal, Larry Wilkerson. But, you know, Cindy, she's a leader and a mentor to several of our new special needs teachers. And only she knows the numerous, numerous hours of time she spent writing IEPs. A lot of that. Congratulations. Three, two, one.
Hey, Bill, I would like to say that I've heard new teachers of our high school, and some discreetly we have, they talked about how good a co-teacher you are and how well you work with kids. So I think you need to have that pump up. We've heard it numerous times over in the summer.
And I'll have to say, Lincoln County has been my favorite county to teach in. And so many, I know so many people in here, and I've known them forever, and they work with my dad, and it's very, a very good experience. So thank you.
Thank you.
Libby, I saw Libby come in, I chomped, so I started salivating.
Oh, God.
I was like, there's Miss Debbie, oh boy.
Pressure's on, baby.
Yeah, it is.
Debbie Dingus. Ms. Dingus retired. On June 30th, 2017. I've got 41 years, is that right?
Yes.
Forty-one years of experience teaching and as an administrator. Debbie spent her entire career at Aytonville Elementary teaching Title I until she became the principal in 2004. She remained as principal when the new Harts PKA opened in 2012 and did just a great job, fabulous job of bringing the two schools and the Harts area together under one roof. Just phenomenal in just a short period of time. I'll never forget how that all transitioned, replaced, you know, played out when we moved into that building. And we were hustling. Debbie worked closely and tirelessly with parents, community members, the building authority of West Virginia, and the building architects to make sure her students would tend a modern, well-thought-out spacious as well as a beautiful new school. When I think of all the thousands of students who have passed through her classrooms over the years, and the hundreds of teachers she's mentored, and the number of parents who came to her with questions or concern about their children, I honestly wonder how open Harts up this year without. I had great confidence, of course, in the faculty. And Mr. Mathis has earned a new administrator at Harts. But I have to be honest, Debbie, I'm worried because I looked at the calendar and September the 19th, we have an LSIC presentation at your school.
And you want to get the long, long talks. You may not get dinner, I don't.
Well, that's what we're worried about.
Oh, you're worried about the food. I'll try to make sure that that happens.
Debbie, Debbie, you're the only principal in county that sends me cake.
Chocolate, so it's chicken and dumplings and white.
Sign me up to go up there.
It's open to the community, everybody should come.
Debbie, congratulations.
I'll try mine, too.
Enjoy, you should try the retired.
Well, thank you.
Get everything in the middle between them, and I'll take the pictures.
Should I tell a story about?
No, you did not. No, I think you should, Bill.
I was afraid you were going to tell that.
Tell it.
No, you don't have to tell that.
Hey, James, can I say something about Debbie?
Yes, yes.
Everybody knows I was going to high school my whole life, practically. I was 21 when I started. And when I decided to go back to Harts, I was scared to death because it was the elementary, and she just made it transition so easy. She welcomed me. And I thought I was a little cubicle when I first went to the new school. And the last three years, she gave me my own room, made sure that nobody else could have that room. And she just made me feel really welcome, and it was the best decision I ever made, was to go back home.
Robin locked the room, too, whenever she was. Dared anyone to enter.
I was on the door. She learned, huh?
Yes.
But she did, she took care of me, I have to say that. I mean, she really did.
You know, it's been a privilege. Being able to spend my whole career in Harts, in my community. And I do feel that that school is mine. I mean, sorry to say, but I feel that way. And I want it to be successful. So anything I can do to help it be successful, I'm willing to do. And if I hadn't gotten sick, I would have not have retired. But, you know, life does its curves at times. But I thoroughly enjoyed my 41 years.
That's awesome. Thanks, Jamie. Debbie, Debbie's mother's with us tonight, Ruth, and Ruth Dalton. Ms. Dalton retired on June the 30th with 13 years' experience as a teacher's aide. Ruth's personnel file shows that she worked 14 years as a substitute aide, does that sound right? Before assuming a full-time job in 2004. Just like her daughter Debbie, she spent her career at Aytonville Elementary, moving to the new school in 2012. Ruth was personally dedicated to her students. Whether in a kindergarten setting or working with special needs students, she adapted very well to all her needs. She's truly missed. Congratulations.
I like the yellow and the tail. I took care of the two little old twins from the time I was in first grade till they went through the aid. And one of them, I had to, you know, just stay with him. I had taken the restroom and everything. And we always rode the elevator. And one day, we got on the elevator just standing in him because he's picked up so many bags. And he got about to pee. I said, "Well, honey, it's a sad shit, honey," or "Charles," or "Hamlin." Oh, you're going to get us out of this. Only thing I know to do is just get in the corner over and jerk around. So that's exactly what he did. And, you know, we stayed in there for five solid hours.
What an experience.
Well, I've got to tell one, about one year I had. It was the first year I was at Branchland. It was the first year for kindergarten, and we were in a trailer out back. And we had towel service. So this little fella had never been in school, hadn't been out in public a whole lot, had no idea how to use a milk carton. He, when he got the carton, he opened the whole thing and put the whole thing like, like that. So he had to learn that, but he went to the bathroom. Didn't know to use toilet paper. He backed up to the towel. And I just cried on that. So that's one of my memories. Another one, I had a little boy, he was supposed to be kindergarten, but he looked like he wore baby doll shoes. And he couldn't even get up on the bus. We'd have to lift him on the bus. And that's when I had Jan, Abby.
Oh, yes.
Well, he lived over on Two Mile. And he asked in his pants, "Sit down." We had to put him in a trash bag.
Put him in a trash bag.
Make holes and put him in the trash bag to get him home.
There were no phones.
Did his parents send you back the next day?
Yep.
That was back years ago when we didn't think of having, you know, flowers and stuff. Now the schools have washer and dryers, and we have a closed closet and things like that. But years ago, you didn't have that stuff.
People just kind of love.
Yeah.
One bathroom for the whole school.
Oh, yeah.
It's amazing to think about what it was like back in those days.
Yeah, and I remember doing home visits and people, you know, the families going to the creek with buckets to get water. I mean, you know, that's why I think home visits are so important for teachers. They get a real perspective of where these kids are coming from. I mean, you can have a lot more compassion for them. I would encourage everybody to make home visits. I know it's probably difficult, you know, with the amount of days you have available to do it, but it's definitely an eyes. And I think a lot of the people need to see where they come from.
We did a home visit one time, and you were almost afraid to sit down on the couch. You know, you've been there.
I have.
And we asked the family if there was anything that we could do for them. This was when we made the visit. And they said, "Well, we'd like a back door." They had strung, they had no back door, and they had strung a quilt over the door to try to keep as much call-out as they could. Well, we got them a back door. But, I mean, Libby's right, you just don't have any idea where these kids are coming from until you make a home visit. coming from until you make a home visit, home visits.
Okay. And then, Ronald, Doug Miller. Come on, Debbie. Doug Miller retired on March the eighth, two thousand and seventeen after twenty-eight years as a custodian. Doug was hired as a substitute in nineteen seventy-eight, but became full-time employee in nineteen seventy-nine working at Duval High School. Doug has admitted on more than one occasion, he made a big mistake in nineteen ninety-one when he resigned and moved out of state. He realized his mistake and he came back in nineteen ninety-three and started all over again as a substitute. He was rehired at Duval as a regular employee in two thousand and transferred to the central office in two thousand and two where he finished his career. I personally observed Doug on a daily basis and can honestly say that he took great pride in his work. He wanted the building to shine and always did. Our central office employees, board members, anyone who had visited the central office knew the restrooms were going to be clean, the hall floors were going to be shining and the offices and classrooms would all be in order. Doug established a system that had been fine-tuned over the years, guaranteeing this entire building would be painted, polished, and ready when school opened each year. Summers were extremely busy and unfortunately, health concerns forced Doug to retire before he was probably ready to do so. But Doug, as well as all of our retirees, certainly deserved a long, healthy, restful retirement. So, congratulations.
I'd like to say that I've worked with a lot of dedicated people and this is one of the most dedicated people that I've had opportunity to work with.
There's a lot of stories people probably want to tell on Doug. Bill Lample bought him a gift one year for Christmas, I thought, and I think it said it all, I guess Doug took it with him when he retired.
Guidance, uh, sometimes relationship things.
Secret to happiness.
But the first year, first year I worked for the school system was nineteen seventy-six and none of the students had been in high school working the after-school program, I don't remember what they called it. But he came down to my office, special aide, and, and he cleaned for me and we became friends. And, uh, we've worked together all these years and I was really happy when he came down here to the board office. He and I count him as one of our best, best buddies and, uh, we miss him.
Um, I would like to say that whenever I started to do, you know, Larry was there, he, he guided me a lot. He really did. He, you know, he really did, he guided me a lot, the more he guided me, the more I learned, I learned a lot on my own. Um, more like I told them, I'm a self-educator. Um, I try to pass what I've gathered for myself to others, I try to pass that off to them. Just like here, something will tear up, maintenance is gonna get to it and I say, "Well, you know, they need this." I'll go out of my way, go fix things, whatever needs to be fixed, I'll go fix my change of dreams or whatever. Uh, but stepping aside, Brendan, Tina, they'd call me, they'd say, "There's a truck coming in, they need, there's nobody here to unload it after five o'clock, it may be six, sometimes seven." I'd be here waiting on that truck to unload it. And that's one thing they did really have to worry about is not having something. Whatever needed to be done was basically done. I mean, it's proterbed. Even though I went out of my way to do things, but I didn't mind it, I enjoyed it. Uh, I enjoyed working with all the superintendents, uh, being around them, to them, you know, to learn from them or whatever, you know. Uh, I never had one superintendent say anything to me, I was like, he's never, they never had the real, they'd come and ask me about something or, "How long, how long would it take you to do this?" Or whatever. I said, "Well, you know, I can do it as soon as I can or I get it done as quick as I can." Well, he got done. I remember, it didn't matter if it was painting or what, it got done. I had spent time in this building, whenever I first came here, I would be here at four o'clock in the morning, thinking. Of course, it, you know, I just wanted everything to look good, I just wanted things, I was the one cleaning the building, I wanted to clean it, I wanted it. And that's the main thing, just trying to get something done that you know is gonna make it easy on yourself and not, you know, you wanted to make it easier instead of harder. But Larry, Steve, I love our Griffiths field, never forget sitting in a corner with my feet up against a baseball. Wondering what I was doing, but I was putting, I was blowing the baseball on the wall and it kept killing off, so I just took my feet and I just sat there and held it up against it. So it would start sticking, you know, but anyway, they just things like that I don't forget or, you know, they just kind of, more or less, "You all right," you know, basically. I don't know if he thought it lost it or what, but anyway, Brendan, Tina, I really enjoyed, uh, being with them, they, Tina would come tell me about something, she would, if there was anything at all, like I said, a little truck, she would ask me if somebody was coming in here after something, she'd ask me to wait on them or watch for them or whatever. Uh, she'd tell them to rattle the door if I'm not there or whatever, but anyway, it all worked out to good, it really did. And I miss it, I would love to be in here again, I really would. Uh, my health is, uh, not being the best, but I'm still hanging in, I'm trying to do the best I can. I was always a fighter and I'm still fighting. I, I just want to fight, there's someone from my best of thieves in that factory. And whether it happened or not, I can say, "Well, that's right." That's something. Jeff, Bill, I appreciate you all, I, I really enjoyed working with you all while we were here. And I'm gonna miss each and every one of you. I still do, I still do. I do, well, right.
Thank you, Debbie.
Mr. McKiff, if I can say one thing, you know, to, in today's workforce, and most of us here in the central office hear a lot about, "That's not my job description." We hear that a lot. Nothing we ever asked Doug to do, and there was a whole lot of things that he was asked to do that was certainly not in his job description. And he's right, there was many times there was gonna be trucks coming in here late and there was nobody to unload them, but we always said that Doug would stay, all we'd have to is ask him, "Did he ever come in here that there was snow or anything, that our sidewalks were not clean and that our entryways were not taken care of?" And many times, when we would be here and the snow would come and some of us would be left, we'd go outside and our cars would be cleaned off, Doug would take care of. You don't get that everywhere.
No.
And it's a whole lot less entertaining around here.
We won't even go there. Uh, I, I would like to take just a few minutes to recognize our other retirees who couldn't join us this evening, so, uh, I'll begin with Myra Blair. Uh, Myra Blair retired on June the thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen after thirty-nine years' teaching experience. From nineteen seventy-eight through two thousand and six, Myra taught kindergarten at Griffinsburg Elementary, moving to Hearts Primary in two thousand and six when restructuring occurred, and then to the New Hearts PKA in two thousand and twelve. Myers was recognized as a distinguished teacher among her peers and her knowledge in the subject matters unsurpassed. Over the years, she worked as an after-school teacher, as well as an after-school mentor, but her natural ability and willingness to mentor younger teachers was amazing to me. She gladly stepped into this role and countless young teachers benefited from her entering over the years. Myra Blair. Bertie Gandy. Bertie Gandy retired August thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen after serving county, as the county's chief business official treasurer for twenty-one years. Bertie served the school system during very lean times, as well as years when a modest carryover was possible. A superintendent-related once, Bertie possessed a very important skill, and that was her ability to effectively communicate financial topics that were extremely complex to her coworkers and other stakeholders, including her board. Bertie took great pride in her work and always tried to find new improved ways of doing things to bring the school system in line with the twenty-first century. She and her girls were always looking for ways to save county money and to stretch each dollar as far as it would go. Bertie's probably attended more state financial meetings, ASBO meetings, trainings related to all things financial, including one of her personal favors that we heard, heard mentioned a million times with OPAM, as well as the Board Education meetings than anyone else in the state. Danny Dayler retired September the thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen after working thirty years in the school system. Danny began his career in nineteen ninety-seven as a science teacher at Duval High School for two years, working under Mr. Wilkerson as a manager. Uh, four years as a teacher at Hearts and nine years at Guy Valley as a math and/or science teacher. In two thousand and two, Danny assumed his role as technology coordinator for the county and moved us ahead in all things technology, in particular, any technology advances that would better serve our students. Lincoln County is far ahead of many counties today in the development of technology and innovation as a result of Danny's efforts. I attribute this to Danny and all his hard work, he made himself aware of every funding source around, locally as well as at the federal level, and vigorously went after funding that would help our county. He was even known to get other people's money here at the central office, they had to watch him like a hawk.
That's why, just standing, I called him money bags, we didn't know where to go to get the money.
Uh, he loved attending technology conferences, I'd tell the story, I wish he could have been here since, especially those that was held in Morgantown, Debbie, Morgantown. And, oh, let me find, I've lost my, oh, where he proudly wore his Marshall green and white every day. Danny willingly took on a relatively new role, technology coordinator, quickly moved the entire system into the technology age. He never complained or refused any work, even though sometimes he talked about backlog, or, you know, workload that he had, but, uh, you, you were at the administrative retreat we had several years ago when Danny started talking about all this work that we take on as educators and administrators. And he made his comment that at times he felt like he was practical monkey. And we're all like, "What?"
And we never let him forget it.
He had written a book, you know, about taking on everyone else's workload, you know, but, you know, he was just so much fun. And, uh, he never knew when he opened his mouth what he was gonna say. But anyway, he, certainly he missed. Uh, Scott Atkins Jr. Scott Atkins retired on September thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen after working as a bus operator and substitute bus driver for nineteen years. Scott worked one year as a truck driver in Matthews Department in two thousand and four, but returned driving the bus the next year. As his schedule allowed, Scott took on after-school runs as a substitute when the regular driver had to be off, and as a regular after-school driver in Hamilton for a number of years. Students knew when they got on his bus, Scott would have a smile and a kind word for you. Students also knew that their bus would be cleaned and usually spotless and shiny. He took great pride in his work and making sure that his bus was one of the cleanest in earth. Kathy McComas. Ms. McComas retired on December eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen as an executive secretary to county's instructional center. Kathy worked as a substitute clerk and substitute secretary for seven years, serving nearly all the county schools, and then was hired full-time in two thousand and four. Kathy worked at Guy Valley, Lincoln County High School, and then moved to the central office in two thousand and nine. Kathy was always willing to step up and assist her coworkers when needed and never hesitated until they had a hand in when they were needed. Janie Lucas. Janie Lucas retired on December first, two thousand and sixteen as a cook at West Hamilton Elementary. Ms. Lucas worked five years as a substitute cook throughout the county and became full-time in two thousand and seven and assigned to Lincoln County High School where she remained until transferred to West Hamilton in two thousand and thirteen. Jan was a hard, I'm saying Janice, Janice, Janice was a hard-working employee who loved to interact with children when they came through the breakfast or lunch line. Janice Lucas. Rebecca Magoo. Rebecca retired on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen as a supervisory aide at Lincoln County High School. Rebecca worked as a substitute aide for fourteen years and became full-time in two thousand as a special education aide at Griffithsville Elementary. She worked at Midway Elementary for eight years before transferring to the high school in two thousand and ten. She has worked both as a classroom aide, as well as a bus aide during the regular school year, as well as an extended school year. She touched the lives of so many special needs students and their families and it will certainly be missed at the high school. Marcia Starr. Ms. Starr retired on May thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen after thirty-three years as a regular classroom teacher. Many others, many of you may remember Marcia retired one other time in two thousand and seven, but returned the next year as a substitute teacher and eventually as a full-time teacher again. Marcia started as an early childhood educator in nineteen seventy-four at Ranger and had taught Title I in either first, second, or third grades at Hamilton Elementary, Feds Elementary, Griffithsfield, and Duval. Over the years, Marcia worked as an after-school teacher, a lead facilitator, a Saturday school teacher, a mentor teacher, and an early intervention teacher in a summer school program. We're all wondering though, who else she retired to the classroom next year? She might be back. And I believe, no, we got, Charles, Charles Rainey. Charles, Lyle Rainey. Charles Rainey retired on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen with a little over thirty years' teaching experience, with the exception of five years working out of the central office and three years in Lebanon County. Charles taught special education at Aytonville Elementary and then the New Hearts PKA his entire career. Charles witnessed many changes in special education regulations and requirements over the years. He attended countless hours of training to learn about these changes and his knowledge and experience will be greatly missed. Fred Taggert retired on June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen after seventeen years of teaching experience. Some of Fred's experience was not only in West Virginia, but also as well sometimes he's been at Arkansas and North Carolina. All this Lincoln County experience occurred at Duval, with the exception of one year at Pleasantview Elementary during the nineteen ninety, ninety-one school year. Fred served as a mentor teacher for a number of years, helping new teachers succeed in the classroom. Dolores Burton. Dolores retired on April twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen after fifteen years as a full-time teacher's aide and thirteen years as a substitute aide. Dolores worked at Midway, Hamilton, West Hamilton, Lincoln County High School, Ranger, and Hearts, nearly every school in the county. Dolores served as an early education aide, as well as a special education aide during, and provided love and support that those children needed and deserved. George Gonzalez. George retired on June the thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen as a fourth-grade teacher at Duval. He began his career in nineteen seventy-eight at McCorko Elementary where he taught for two years, transferred to Griffithsfield in nineteen eighty where he remained for thirty-seven years. George was usually always the first teacher in the building in the mornings and one of the last ones out in the evening. For most of his career, he taught fourth grade, moving up to fifth grade on three different occasions. George probably served on more textbook adoption committees than any other teacher, taught in schools' after-school program for many years, performed breakfast duty for a great number of years, and was truly the face of Duval Elementary over that period of time. His constant presence, his smiling face, his kind words, the students will certainly be missed. And I have one, one other person that would have to be, thought would be here tonight. Janie. Fair. And I really want to see. I don't, do you have? I don't know what I'm doing. And font's smaller. I might have to have some help.
You do it larger?
Yeah. Yeah, for some reason mine's much larger, you must have had something to do with it. Janie retired on December thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen as the county's BD autism teacher after thirty-five years of service. Janie began her career at Duval High School in nineteen eighty-one, moved to Hamilton High School the next year as a schools' learning disabilities teacher, where she remained for twenty-three years. Janie moved to the county office in two thousand and five and expanded her service to special needs students countywide. She attained an endorsement She attained an endorsement of autism shortly after coming to the central office, allowing her to work directly with identified students and provide school personnel with the knowledge of best practices and specific strategies to use when meeting the needs of students with autism. In addition to her many regular teaching duties, Janie touched the lives of students achieving at all levels by serving as a teacher in summer rocket camp, as Hamlin's compliance case manager, as an extended school year teacher at Ranger Elementary, and an after-school teacher at both Hamlin and Ranger, as well as serving as a mentor, and even a supplemental homebound instructor when the need arose sixteen years ago. Janie's experience and dedication to the county school system will greatly be missed.
Get that look every now and then.
I, yeah, that's...
I just want to, you know, hearing all these names, all these people, it's just amazing. I picked a number of years that they shared with us, but I reflect back on everybody here, over the decades and everything. So I want to thank you on behalf of the board, and especially on behalf of our kids. Lisa, you can make me laugh here if you...
I can tell a little story.
You can tell some Lisa Michelle stories. One thing I'm sitting back here thinking before I get up here is everybody here is proud of me from Lincoln County. And I think of that, the multi-categorize people here. That fellow right there, he used to make my day. I'd be going down in the morning, we'd get there for everybody else, and he'd be doing things that, I'd say, "What are you doing now?" He'd be known to do unique things. He would bring flowers, not for me now. He'd bring flowers to school.
I did maybe that myself.
And all the things, and then all the different people here, you know, I hear these names and I see the people here. Libby, I first remembered you when you took a class from me for Southern Community College. I taught at Guy Valley, before you started teaching. And I think of everybody here, of course, we've got all the categories. Once you get Debbie, you know, the principal, and, you know, we, that together, the principal, and all of those kind of things. I just think of all the categories, and we have every category there is, plus the others that have been here. And we just, I want to give, thank you to the kids in this county. I appreciate you. Thanks.
All right. There's no better way to celebrate any occasion than by eating. Brenda, speaking of meatloaf, mashed potatoes, big white...
It's probably not any good.
I was, well, let me say the cheese ball, you all won't like it.
No, 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 no. It's nasty.
But we'd like for you to stay and join us for dinner to celebrate your retirement. Thank you so much again for all that you've done for the children in this county. So appreciate it. And we're ready, and we're ready to eat. The food's out here on the table.